I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
Here.
Councilmember Brian Erdy Alice.
Here.
Doug Shasso.
Here.
John Capers.
Here.
Bill Garcia.
Here.
Lynn Deal.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Present.
Okay, first item on our agenda is public comment and our audience participation for items that are not on this agenda. Is there anybody in the audience wish to address council? Sign in, please.
Good evening, mayor and councilmen. I'm Eva Graham. I live at 808 Navajo Avenue. Joe and I bought our home six years ago this month, August the 20th. And I have called city council numerous times, some of you, not all of you, and I've talked to Mr. Glameyer. I've talked to Dustin Hyde about the weeds behind us in the alley. They're awful. Nothing has been done in months. We live in the, our home faces the field behind us. Behind the alley of Navajo. Someone asked me, where's Navajo? Navajo is at the end of Cheyenne and Colfax. Come down Cheyenne, make an L, and you would be on Colfax. There are ten condos in our HOA. This is the worst that the field has ever looked in the six years that we have lived there. Our HOA president is here tonight, and I'll let him speak also. It seems that when I call the city, I feel that I'm getting the runaround. That's truly what I feel. There's two things I want to bring up. The weeds in our alley. I'd like each one of you. I know that you were supposed to, did you, go down our?
I got a 5:35 last night.
Okay. Doug did. I believe Lynn has seen our alley. I don't know if any of the rest of you have. Did you ever come out? Yes, you did. You did, after I talked to you. It's bad. Three of our residents that use one dumpster, I walked the alley this morning. It has weeds taller, higher than the dumpster is high around it. We've gone out and had snakes at the dumpster. We've had snakes at our back door, right at our back door, when you open the back door. We've had frogs like crazy, mosquitoes like crazy. The pond, the water flows into a pond just right, let me think, my directions, right west of West Street. There behind us, there is a huge pond that has had standing water for months, not just weeks, months, months and months. We had standing water right behind us yesterday. Now, it's soaked in. But that farmer floods that field and thereby he cannot get anything in there to cut the weeds. He's not even taking care of the weeds at the edge of the alley. There's goat heads, there's weeds around the utility boxes that service spectrum TV, CenturyLink phone. Some of your utility boxes are covered with weeds. I mean, covered. It's that bad. And it needs attention. Now, I would like to point out, the first four years that we lived in our home, the field was, I believe, leased to a man by the name of McCracken, if I'm not mistaken. And he raised alfalfa. He would cut the alfalfa four or five times a cutting, or a season, growing season. And when he would cut the alfalfa and harvest it, he would go in and also cut the weeds and keep the weeds down, maintaining the weeds. This gentleman that is, and Dustin Hyde would not tell me his name, so I have no idea who the farmer is. He's raised corn last year and this year. He is not taking care of the weeds. One time I called City Hall, or called and talked to, you've changed things and you've separated weed control away from the police department, I understand? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So I called planning and zoning, right away. That's not annexed into the city. I was told that the other day. You folk, and I called Tim Amon at Morgan County Clerk and Recorder. I got the dates. You had a hearing on August the 15th, 2017 concerning that. Got another hearing on September 19th, 2017. It was voted on and approved by council to annex that field on October 3rd, 2017. It was approved and adopted and recorded December 29th, 2017. So when I call, there should be no excuse about, well, that field is not annexed into the city. You have ordinances for weed control. Mr. Glameyer told me last year when I talked to him that, I believe, if the farmer's not going to take care of it, then the weed ordinance falls back on the landowner. And he said, they'll either get it taken care of, or we'll go in and have it mowed, mow, get the weeds taken care of, send them a bill. What is different from last year and this year that that, those weeds and that pond can be standing in water, not for weeks? Months. Months. It's a mosquito haven. I opened my door one day and the back door on my porch is covered with mosquitoes, literally covered. I'm not the only one out there that feels this way. I talked to several of our neighbors, most of them, and Bill will verify this, are elderly. Other than Joe and I, there's one other couple that is a little bit younger than us, that are schoolteachers. He couldn't come to the meeting tonight. He said he had other commitments and a meeting to go to. But he said it is absolutely absurd, the conditions that are being allowed to go, that we have to look at and that we have to deal with. Not only that, there are children that run on ATVs down that alley. And I have called the police department, and another neighbor has called the police department. Last Monday, there was a little boy, little tiny guy, I would say he was probably maybe 10 years old. Maybe, I don't know, I'm not a good judge of children anymore on their ages. He rode his ATV into that pond of water. And we, Joe and I stood in the alley and watched him because we wanted to make sure that he was safe and that he turned around and got out of that water, because those things can flip. What would happen if a child goes up there, falls in that water, gets hurt on one of those, gets trapped under it? They'd drown. No parent was around watching him. There is a hazard up there. There's an accident waiting to happen. And I hope that you folks will take the time to seriously consider what I'm saying and not just let this fall on deaf ears. Now, another thing I'd like to mention. And the month of, let me think, the month of June, crazy month, I lost my brother, so I can't give you a date on when this happened. But I was in my car with my son, headed to town to do some errands. I turned off of a coma, made a left turn, turn onto West Street coming into town. I'm a careful driver. I really am a careful driver. I almost got hit by a semi. That intersection needs attention. I know that stoplights cost money. And that's a school intersection. School will be starting on Thursday. I pray to God that a child never gets hit, because I have a dear friend, a dear friend, whose son was hit on a bicycle when he was 10 years old. He is now 35. He is a quadriplegic. He cannot walk, talk, and is fed with a feeding tube. It changed his life, his mom and dad's life, and his deceased brother's life, and the man that hit him, it changed his life. You don't want to see a child hurt. Please do something about that intersection. It's dangerous. Dangerous, dangerous, dangerous. Now, I had made the statement when I discussed this with Mr. Glameyer, that do we have to storm City Hall to get something done? He took that, and I made, and I said that as we did when we needed a new direction in our city with previous administration managers. Mr. Glameyer took that as a threat that I was trying to get him fired. That is not my intention, never has been, never will be. I praise you for the work that you do. Employees are thrilled to have you as their city manager. Employee, I have friends that work for the city. Employee morale has jumped sky high. So don't ever think that I'm here trying to get you fired, because sir, that is not the case. Never has been, never will be. So I hope you, I hope you hear me. And I hope the council hears me, because that is not, never has been, my intention. But I plead with you, I beg with you, do something about the intersection on a coma and West Street by our new middle school, for the children's sake, please. There is power in numbers. You're probably aware that the school district had a meeting last night about mandated masks.
Yeah, we're getting on.
Okay, but I want to say this, there's power in numbers. They had over 500 people sign their petition online. So there's power in numbers. Folks, please don't make us have to take out a petition to get something done with this intersection, please. That's all I'm asking. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I'm not, we're not going to debate or go through this. I'm not going to debate, we're not going to go through.
I can't hear you.
I am not going to debate this, but I am going to make a couple of comments, and we're done after, after this. We will address what we can. However, the weeds on the north side of your alley, and I did drive it last night after I got back into town. The weeds on the north side of the alley are the homeowner's responsibility, okay? That land is annexed into the city. It's the same gentleman that owns the other parcels of land that bought them, and he farms them. McCracken wanted to raise alfalfa. His farm, his crop. This gentleman is a rancher and grows corn. Corn takes water. The only way he has to water that is flood irrigating. The natural drainage of everything in that area is to the north.
Is what?
Is to the north. Every, all of it there. So, that's just the way it is. I mean, how, he can't get in there and do anything with the weeds. City can't do anything with the weeds. That is zoned residential, is what he annexed it to the city for. However, he has the right to farm it as agriculture. He also has the right to come in and remove it from the city and put it back into the county. So zoning does not trump the right of use. And that, that is his right with his, his property. So there's not much that can be done until he can cut his corn and harvest his corn out of that field. The mosquitoes, the city is addressing that on a regular basis. We have a citywide mosquito program. They address every sector and quadrant of the town. They trap, they treat the water, they throw back the psyllis pellets or tablets in there. So we have them everywhere. The mosquitoes are at our house. I mean, you may have them a little worse, I don't know, but I'm just saying. There is issues everywhere. Snakes, there's nothing because of that. I have them in my yard very, very often. I've hit them with a mower. So I mean, there's not much that we can, can address right now. The trash can, you're exactly right. I drove by there, and that needs to be cut and trimmed and taken care of. And we'll do what we can, and Steve can look into that. I also drove by a coma, and it is, you have to pull right up there to see either way coming through there. So these are on the radar. We can't address them or jump in and fix them at the drop of a hat. So, but they are on the radar, and we'll get them looked at. So I appreciate you coming, and we will.
Thank you.
Move forward. Were you going to? Okay, well. Okay, would you sign in? If there are different issues than what Eva addressed, then fine, but I don't want to go redundant. We've already run 20 minutes into the meeting, so.
I'm Bill Kendall. I'm at 802 Navajo. And I got dragged into this because I'm the HOA president. There are only 10 units. It's not much of an HOA. I would add a couple things. At first, it looked like he was going to dryland farm his corn this year. But, because he had erased the ditch at the other end of the field. But then he dug a new one, and he, and he put a new berm on our side. But it doesn't go all the way to West Street, and so all the water goes around the end. And he might have been able to mitigate a little bit. You don't know, I suspect, that there's a sewer line underneath that pond. And there are two manholes. And if one of those were to open, you'd suddenly have an acre foot of water in your sewer system. So I think a little extra emphasis might be, might be in order. I have my, my own checklist of things that we should deal with over time, but I'm not going to bring them up today, so thank you much.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Is this on the same topic, Mr. Watham?
No. Mayor Schaver, members of the city council, staff, members of the press, ladies and gentlemen. This has nothing to do with the previous topic, but I want to, maybe you already know what I'm about to say, but if you don't, you're going to get, you're going to hear it again. I've been to several meetings and in, on various topics, but this particular one has to do with what is coming up in Fort Morgan, actually in northeastern Colorado on September the 13th. As many of you know, for the past maybe 15, 20 years, several of us have been fighting to get some transportation in northeastern Colorado, but we didn't know what the transportation that people wanted. Well, after being on the commission and finding out, they wanted transportation to Greeley and into Denver. We're going to get that, and here's how it's going to work. On September the 13th, it's called Bus Tang, B-U-S-T-A-N-G. And it will be running from Montgomery, from Denver to Sterling. And it will pick up people from Sterling, Brush, Fort Morgan, Wiggins, Jersey, into Greeley Medical Center on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. The cost for a round trip ticket is $17. Now, where do you get on and off? Well, there will be an app. And you plug into this app, and it will tell you where you will get on, in like in Fort Morgan, or Brush, or Sterling, or whatever. And then when you get to Greeley, you will get off, and then you will automatically get on a bus. Now, if you don't know how to work an app, or if you don't understand an app, they're going to be coming out with posters and flyers with all kinds of numbers where you can call and get a ticket so you can go to Greeley. And then when you get into Greeley, you can take the bus, which is a lot cheaper than a lot of stuff, and go anywhere you want to in Greeley, and do any shopping you want, wherever you want. You can do anything you want to do. And then you will be told when to get back by that ticket, by that app. But on Tuesdays and Thursdays, Bus Tang will be going to Denver. Now again, it will go from Sterling, Brush, Fort Morgan, Wiggins, only this time it will go to Rogan, Keansburg, Hudson, into Union Station. Again, it will be the app, then you can get on RTD, which I have taken many times. It's very easy if you know how to work it. And also light rail, which I have taken. Again, you need to know how to work it and make sure you don't go to DIA, or it might get stuck. The cost to go to Denver round trip will be $22. Right now, with the price of gasoline, that's, that's pretty reasonable. But this is coming to Fort Morgan now. How big will the bus be? Well, they have them as big as 50 passengers, but because this is a starter, they're only going to have a 17-passenger bus. This is very important to people in northeastern Colorado. How it is received and when it starts, it'll be a good question. I would love to go on at September 13th, but I've got three meetings that day. So I'm bringing this before the council and to before the city manager, because he and I have been emailing each other all the time. But this is a fact now. This is going to happen. And Mayor Schaver, I do have one other item I would like to discuss, only very briefly. As a member of the senior center board, we have a lot of activities. I want to bring you up to date. We have had many parties. We have had, we are on, we have four trips scheduled. We're going on one tomorrow to Olive Garden. In September, we're going to the Rockies game. In December, we are going to hear the Sound of Music, and by the way, we've only got five tickets left for that place. We have all kinds of activities going on. We have bridge, pinochle, poker, cribbage, concentrated rummy, bongo. And we, Derek Lynch, who is the activities director, who has really been doing an excellent job, is starting something new here a few weeks ago, called Movies at 1:30 on Thursday. He picks the movies, and let me tell you, some of them are dandies, because no one heard of them. We are very excited about the new center, but we would also like to see more people come in to utilize that beautiful building. And on that note, I want to wish all of you well and have a good weekend. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jerry, you too. We've got a few days for the weekend, but. Anybody else? Nope. Okay. Next item on our agenda is a proclamation recognizing Sitlali Juarez of Fort Morgan for being chosen as the Colorado State Fair Fiesta Queen. Declaring September 5th, 2021, a Sitlali Juarez Day in Fort Morgan. Whereas the state fair is an annual event celebrating the many outstanding qualities of the state of Colorado. And whereas since 1967, the state fair has designated one day of its fair run to the state fair Fiesta Day to celebrate the Hispanic culture and diversity in our communities. And whereas Fiesta Day is traditionally the most attended and most profitable day of this Colorado State Fair. And whereas, as part of the Fiesta Day activities and programs each year, a scholarship pageant is held to crown the new Fiesta Queen and her court. And whereas this year, the new Fiesta 2021, the new 2021 Fiesta Queen is Sitlali Juarez of Fort Morgan, who has a long and distinguished record of academic success, extracurricular activity participation, and community involvement. Whereas the city of Fort Morgan is proud to have a local young person selected as this honor and celebrates her achievements. Now, therefore, I, Ron Schaver, mayor of the city of Fort Morgan, do proclaim September 5th, 2021, to be Sitlali Juarez Day in the city of Fort Morgan. I witness here, whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of Fort Morgan to be affixed this, the 17th day of August, 2021. Quite an achievement, I would say. May I say a few words? Sure, if you'd like.
Thank you, Mary Schaver, and everybody else. My name is Ivan Reyes. I am a member of the Fiesta Committee. Excuse me. My father's Henry Reyes. He's the founder of Fiesta Day. And this has been going on since 1967. So we've had a pageant from the first year going forward. And with the pageant, we give away scholarships. This year's combined total is $8,000. Hopefully next year, we're going to bump that up to $10,000. It's a great, beautiful tradition. So proud to have Sitlali. Kudos. It's tough, it's tough. No problem.
I apologize.
No, no, no. And thank you so much for welcoming us here, and we look forward to her reign. Would you like to say something?
Thank you so much for this honor. I am very grateful for this. Thank you, Ivan, for giving other young Latinas such as myself a platform to advocate for not just our people, but also giving me a way to advocate for the city of Fort Morgan. I'm very excited for my reign as Fiesta Queen, and thank you so much to our mayor, Ron Schaver, for this honor. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Well deserved. You're welcome. Okay. Yeah, you have a long drive. Yeah, you have a long drive. Ivan and his wife, and...
Susan is our coordinator of Fiesta Day, and, um, just a lot of people. See, a lot of these parents are here.
They drove up from Pueblo, so they have a little distance to cover.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is a presentation on the replacement and installation of a security camera system for the P D. Clinton Brown.
Evening.
Good evening.
Evening, Your Honor, council members. Um, Steve Brown, Fort Morgan Police Department. Um, I'm here tonight to ask or request a replacement of the security cameras at the Fort Morgan Police Department. Um, just a little backstory, we tried to do this about a year or so ago, and, uh, it was taken off of the budget, that's why originally it was budgeted for seventeen thousand dollars. After going out the bid, it turned out it was gonna cost a little bit more than seventeen thousand dollars. Requested to bump the budget up to twenty, just to make sure we cover everything on top of this bid proposal that, uh, we're requesting you guys accept. Um, it's been a while since we've replaced that camera system. Uh, the pictures that I gave you, that's, that's what our camera system looks like. Uh, the one picture of one of the box cameras, that is actually a home for wasp right now, so they are, um, enjoying that quite readily. Can't figure out how to get the wasp spray in there without ruining the camera at this point in time, so just leaving it be at this point. We also have a camera that is not working on the east side of the building. So we are in need of replacing this, this, uh, system. Part of the requirements was this had to be a standalone system, we didn't want it on the server or anything like that. Uh, first security came in with a bid for a little over seventeen thousand dollars. Um, I know there is a bid on there for about nine thousand dollars from Denver Audio Video. Um, but that gentleman wanted to bore through the grass and underneath the concrete, putting, uh, cable, and that was actually gonna cost us more, I just didn't know how much, and he didn't put it in the bid. Um, so, based on that information, uh, the funding source came out of, uh, ours from account number, uh, forty-eight oh one, twenty-one hundred thousand. Uh, the, again, the budget was set for seventeen. We are asking to go over budget for, um, the removal and replacement of all current cameras, cabling up for CAT six con... with conduit, uh, the addition of two I P cameras for the new addition of the evidence building we have, uh, a camera that's added into the evidence room, and then all the replacement of the cameras on the building itself. So we're asking you all to approve this, uh, bid.
Any questions for Commander Brown?
I was surprised to see, uh, some of the pictures with the, uh, cable, you know, the wiring.
Yes.
So I'm hoping that, uh, we supervise, and I see it's in conduit, which would help as well.
Right, and that's part of the requirement, it all has to be in, in conduit, because it, uh, the building is designed, the way the building is designed, it would be hard for them to be able to put it through anything.
I agree.
So it all has to sit on top of the, uh, roof, and it has to be in the conduit, because, and I, again, I am not sure how long that camera system's been up there. Um, whenever they come and look at those box cameras, they go, those are pretty old, and so I don't even know if they're serviceable anymore.
Came with the building.
It came, probably.
Yeah, I know it did.
I think they took it off the other building and put it on there.
As far as serviceable, I don't believe they are serviceable.
I don't believe they're serviceable either.
It was gonna cost us several thousand dollars just to replace part of it, because it would require a whole upgrade to make that one camera work, so.
Well, I walked in there and there was a puddle of wasps, and underneath the one walking in, so somebody sprayed it with wasps.
So that was our security system, and the lights right outside the front door? Yeah, I, I had to take care of those.
Yeah, there was quite a pile.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Commander Brown? I would entertain a resolution. I'd offer a resolution to accept the bid from First Class Security Systems of Greeley, Colorado, for a cost not to exceed twenty thousand dollars for the proposals put forth in the record.
I second it.
I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Bill Garcia, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Next is a presentation on bids for the Historic City Hall Maintenance and Repair Pro... Repair Project. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, this project is, uh, just kind of a compilation of a number of different issues in the public-facing area of, um, City Hall. It was discussed, I believe, during the retreat, and, uh, we put money in the budget to try and, uh, correct some of these, um, deficiencies in the appearance. Um, the memo in your packet kinda outlines what we're gonna do, restucco the entryway and, uh, banisters and window wells outside. Do something with the tiles and grout in the lobby and entryway, we're not sure. We wanna talk to the, uh, well, I'm getting ahead of myself, there was only one bid, so we can talk to that, um, gentleman and see what his plan is. Um, because the, his cost for the tiles was, uh, pretty expensive, and then also strip and restain the wood on the stairways. We actually put this out to bid once earlier this year and got no responses, so we reposted it in July and directly notified, uh, contractors who do this type of work that were registered with the city, and we did receive one bid from T Rod Construction in Greeley. Um, if you look at the, the, uh, bid form in your packet, um, one of the, a, a painting contractor who is working with T Rod came to look at the building, and she said that the, um, wood frame windows were badly in need of attention, um, as soon as possible. And so I told her she could submit that as an option, um, which she did. It would be a cost of thirteen dollars to scrape glaze, primer, and paint all the exterior window frames. Um, we also, on kind of a separate track, have a, um, are pursuing a possible window solution. As you recall, we attempted a couple of times to, um, get bids to replace windows or, um, install storm windows or somehow solve the problem of, uh, the windows in City Hall, and there may be something coming on that, but what we'd like to ask is for, uh, approval to not to exceed forty thousand dollars. That would allow us to do everything on this bid, on this proposal, including the windows. If, uh, the other track, the other possibility for a window fix, uh, comes through, we would obviously not spend that money. But we'd like to have the, uh, um, approval not to exceed, just in case.
It said in there something about the way you paint on the windows, are they gonna replace the window panes?
I'm sorry, Kenny.
I'm sorry.
It said something about, um, scraping, caulking, glaze, and, and reglazing the windows?
Yeah.
They're not gonna replace any window panes, right? When they say glazed windows?
Yeah, I'm not sure what she means by glaze, but yeah, you would think that would be new glass, but it's not.
All right.
Glaze is your caulking around the glass.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Oh, yeah, actually, you're sitting here hesitating whether you wanna spend the thirteen for the paint, thirteen thousand. That's a lot of money. But by the time we, uh, get around to doing something about windows, and with the current, um, timeline for getting windows and stuff made, I think we oughta just go ahead and get it painted. Um, I'm afraid that we're gonna sit around and by the time we get windows figured out, it's gonna be another year and a half. And, uh, if it doesn't work, then we're even further behind on wood damage. So I would just encourage you to pursue it and get the building looking good. Uh, that's my opinion.
And that forty thousand covers?
Yeah, the, the total of the bid is like thirty-eight-five. Um, we have fifty thousand in the budget. Um, I don't see any reason we would exceed forty, but you could give us fifty if you want.
No, we're gonna hold back on that one. Give us fifty if you want, yeah. We could. Any other questions? I'd entertain a resolution. I'd offer a resolution to accept the bid from T Rod Construction of Greeley for Historic City Hall Maintenance and Repair Project, including options and an amount not to exceed forty K. Was that you, Lynn? I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Lynn Deal, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is a presentation on bids for the West Highway Thirty-four Electric Rebuild. Mr. Mann. You got three minutes.
Good evening, Council Mayor. Uh, tonight in front of you, I have an electric line rebuild on West Highway Thirty-four. It's part of my capital improvement plan for this year. I, uh, went out and, uh, bid the project on July sixth, got the bids back July twenty-seventh. I received five bids that met specs. And I'm asking for council to accept the approval from Altitude Energy in the amount not to exceed a hundred and forty thousand for the West Highway Thirty-four Distribution Line Project. The additional twenty-one thousand eighty-nine dollars will be used for unseen issues and additional poles on the system as time allows.
Is there a reason that Altitude came in at one eighteen, then the next closest one was like two eighty-one?
So the first, the, the two highest ones, they're out of state.
Yeah, I saw that.
So I could see mobilization being a factor there, a lot of mobilization. Uh, these guys throw out high bids and hope they get them. And some don't. And that's what I suspect happened here.
Okay, they're just so busy.
Some are hungry, some... Yeah, they're busy, and if they get it, they make some money. If they don't get it, they don't have time for it anyway.
Okay, fair enough.
And Doug, you said you worked with Altitude before?
Yes.
Okay.
Altitude's done a few projects for us.
Okay, okay.
Quick question again, I think you told us when we were talking last rebuild or something like that, why the change from regular poles or wooden poles to the steel poles?
System reliability. Out there on West Highway Thirty-four, a traffic accident will take a wood pole out. Fifty percent of the time, they just bend the pole and the pole stays in the air as long with the wire, so. A little safer. Okay. They bend and dock, right?
Takes the car out instead of...
Yeah.
Safer for who?
They don't get electrocuted, I guess.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Mann? I would entertain a resolution. I'd offer a resolution to accept the bid from Altitude Energy in the amount not to exceed a hundred and forty thousand for West Highway Thirty-four Electric Distribution Line Rebuild Project.
I second it.
I'll second.
I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Bill Garcia, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thanks.
Everybody have a good evening.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on Ordinance Number Twelve Fifty-four, an ordinance amending Chapter Twenty-one, Article Four of the Fort Morgan Municipal Code regarding electrical requirements. This is a public hearing. Please keep your public comment to the issues before the city council. Each speaker is asked to limit comment time to three minutes unless the speaker represents a group of citizens, in which event additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations. I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under these guidelines or otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, or not pertinent to the issues, and to set a time limit on the duration of testimony if I determine it necessary in light of the number of people who have signed up to testify. First is the legal notice. Mr. Brennan, was this properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, a legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on August sixth.
Presentation to the ordinance, Mr. Kirkendall.
Well, from the last time I, as far as I know, nothing's changed as far as the ordinance itself. I did, uh, get contacted by the local newspaper, and I did give them a punch list of items that I thought would most affect the citizens. If you want, I can review those with you guys. But the first three were those ones that I requested a, a year of, uh, non-enforcement till we had a chance to see if we could, uh, get the double pole G F I breakers, because right now electricians don't know how to get them. They're not available, or they're out for who knows when, so. And then with the option, as the state did on a, one of their amendments, to allow us to revisit it in a year, if the, still can't get the, the breakers, then we would just automatically drop it and revisit it when we adopted the twenty-twenty-three codes. But the other ones that I wanted to point out was kind of asked is that, uh, like we said before, uh, the biggest ones that'll affect people are when you're finishing your basements. Now, those have to be both G F I and arc fault particular devices on those outlets, so. It's either breakers or outlets, or a combination of both, or whatever you can find, so those are, um, uh, a new requirement. And, uh, the other one is in kitchens. Peninsulas and islands will now be based on outlets of how many square feet that island or peninsula is, so that, instead of just requiring one outlet out there, you may have two, three, or four, or five, depending on how big you make it. So that one is, uh, gonna be a tough one depending on, 'cause you have a hard time putting them out there on the islands and have a place to put them, so. Uh, that one's being interesting for all. Um, now we have, uh, the other ones that we have, when you upgrade your services, the, we have the arc, or the surge protection has to be installed. And then, uh, we have the ability, we have to mark an emergency disconnect on all new services or anything that upgrades the breaker box, and you have to add a breaker box. You have to identify it as an emergency disconnect for, for people that are coming there in an emergency response, so they know they can go to that box and shut the power off. I have talked to Mr. Linton, and he, uh, those properties for single-family and duplexes that have the meter pedestals, he's okay with them to identify that box so that somebody doesn't have to add a new one to their, outside of their house. So that will help some costs for those that do have the meter pedestals, 'cause it is technically a service disconnect, and it's out away from the house, so, uh, you don't have to go up to a place that's maybe on fire to try to shut a breaker off on the outside, so. That one would work well for all, and he's not even, uh, against if they need a surge protection, if they wanna put it out there in that box also, so. That can, those that have the meter pedestals, that'll help them out. So it is...
So the meter, the meter pedestal with, will serve as that disconnect?
Yeah, 'cause technically, your main breaker for those houses is underneath that meter pedestal, so. Right now, the reality is, is, uh, people show up, you have the meter pedestal, they will shut that off and get sealed off. If the lighting power guys show up to shut it off, that's where they go. They shut that off, seal it off, and now you don't have power from up into the house anymore, so. Those, uh, those will help the homeowners a lot on that cost, those that have the meter pedestals. Other than that, uh, it's like everything new with the codes. We may not all like it, but it's in the code, and we can't really do much about it now, since the state's rules, we have to follow them. If you have any other questions, I'll be, try to answer them.
Doesn't appear anything's really changed from the last first reading we had.
No.
Been in the paper, so public's aware.
Yeah. All electricians are happy we postponed as long, and they're happy and hoping that the amendment for the two-pole G F Is, uh, gets passed, because... uh, gets passed, because they're pulling their hairs out trying to figure out how to do that, and state's not letting them do it, and they have stuff that's been four, five, six months now on some projects that they still haven't got finals because they can't get the breakers. Depends on the brand name and who, who have availability.
Any other questions for Mike?
So you said that you thought when we pass this, it ought to be with the stipulation that it's revisited in a year to see about the availability of the breakers, then?
Yeah, so that, that follows the same guidelines as what the state did when the mini splits, they were finding that the breakers that were controlling them, and it was, hadn't do, didn't have a whole lot to really do with the availability of the breaker. It was actually the mini split itself was tripping the breakers, so there was those constant nuisance trips, so they have to figure out how they can get something to protect it. Now that they required it, that it's now tripping it, and that's kind of like the arc faults were when they first come out. A lot of stuff was tripping it, everybody didn't like them, then they had, they worked the bugs out after they put it into the code, and that's kind of what this happened here, the finding out they got bugs, now they gotta work out the bugs, so.
Anyone else? Thanks, Mike. Next, we'll hear public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I'd ask the city clerk if you've received any oral or written comments in your office prior to this meeting.
No, Your Honor.
Council discussion, are there any questions from council or discussion? There's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Kevin Lindell, a second by Doug Sashow. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, same sign. That motion carries. Council action, Mr. Wilson.
Mayor and council, you've heard presentation of the ordinance, proper action is by a resolution approving on second and final reading ordinance twelve fifty-four.
I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution approving the second and final reading of ordinance twelve fifty-four, amending chapter twenty-one, article four of the Fort Morgan Municipal Code regarding electrical requirements and authorization to publish by title only, also to be revisited in one year to review availability of breakers.
Second.
I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Brian Erdialis. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing of ordinance twelve fifty-five, an ordinance directing that an amendment to article three, section five, subsection A of the City of Fort Morgan Charter be presented to city voters at a regular election to be held November second, twenty-twenty-one. This is a public hearing, and the same requirements as the previous public hearing remain in effect. First is legal notice. Mr. Brennan, has it properly been, properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, a legal notice of this public hearing also appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on August sixth.
Presentation of the ordinance, Mr. Glamire.
All right, thank you, Your Honor. Members of the council, what you have in your packet tonight is, uh, the same ordinance that you reviewed at the last meeting on first reading. No changes have been made. Uh, I've received no comments or, uh, uh, issues related to the ordinance, so I believe this is ready for your adoption on second and final reading tonight. Happy to answer any questions if you have those.
Are there any questions for Mr. Glamire? Seeing none, up next, we'll go to public hearing, or public comments. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I would ask the city clerk if you've received any oral or written comments submitted to your office prior to this hearing.
No, Your Honor.
Council discussion, are there any que- questions or count, discussion from council? No further discussion, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Kevin Lindell, a second by Doug Sashow. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign. That motion carries. Council action, Mr. Wilson.
Mayor and council, you've heard the presentation of this ordinance, proper action is by resolution approving on second and final reading ordinance number twelve fifty-five.
I would entertain a resolution.
Tonight, offer one approving the second and final reading of ordinance number twelve fifty-five, an ordinance directing that an amendment to article three, section five, subsection A of the City of Fort Morgan Charter be presented to city voters at the regular election to be held on November second, twenty-twenty-one, and authorization to publish by title only.
I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Brian Erdialis. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on ordinance twelve fifty-six, amending charter ten, chapter ten, article four of the Fort Morgan Municipal Code concerning offenses by minors and underage persons raising the minimum age regarding tobacco pri- by pro- regarding tobacco products to twenty-one-year-olds. This once again is a public hearing, the same requirements will be used for this one as well. First is legal notice. Mr. Brennan, was it properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, a legal notice of this hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on August sixth.
Presentation, Mr. Wilson.
Mayor and council, uh, since the adoption of our ordinance is concerning consumption of tobacco, the federal law and the state law have changed, raising the age for consumption from eighteen to twenty-one. This ordinance conforms our amendments to the requirements of those two laws.
Anybody have any questions? Seeing none. We will hear public comments. Is there anybody who wishes to address council on this issue? Seeing none, I would ask the city clerks if you have received any oral or written comments prior to this hearing.
No, Your Honor.
Comments or discussion by council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to close by Kevin Lindell, a second by Doug Sashow. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign. That motion carries. Council action, Mr. Wilson.
Mayor and council, you've heard presentation of this ordinance, proper action is by resolution approving on second and final reading ordinance number twelve fifty-six.
I would entertain a resolution.
And I'd offer a resolution approving the second and final reading of ordinance number twelve fifty-six, amending chapter ten, article four of the Fort Morgan Municipal Code concerning offenses by minor and underage persons about consumption of tobacco products and authorization to publish by title only.
Second.
I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Brian Erdialis. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
That concludes public hearings. Next item on the agenda is twenty-twenty-two budget calendar.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, we have a number of budgets before you tonight. This is the second of three blocks, if you will, of the general fund. So, uh, continuing from, from last meeting, uh, the first one on your docket here is the police department. So I'll turn that over to Lauren.
Okay, good evening. Um, so first of all, the very first line I'll talk about is the salaries. It's a little bit misleading, I want you to know. Um, the number is correct. If you remember, we did remove the code enforcement officer from the police department, moved him over to the city. If you look at twenty-twenty-one's budgeted, that included that code enforcement officer. So twenty-twenty-two would not include that budget, that, that code enforcement officer, but it does include another employee, so. Uh, what we're looking at is doing is an over-hire program essentially, if you will, where it's been taking us about a year to get somebody trained now, send them to the academy and come back out. We used to be able to hire people already trained and, and get them trained pretty quickly, but, um, it's hard to fill positions in law enforcement anymore, so it's taking us a year. So what, what my plan is to do with this is actually replace that code enforcement officer with a civilian employee that we would send to the academy. If we were fully staffed, we would be sending them to the academy, knowing that we're losing some people in the, in the meantime on average. So in a best-case scenario, that police officer would come out, and they would be the thirty-second officer. We wouldn't do anything else. But in a normal scenario or worst case, if somebody were to leave, we already have somebody in the training program, so it limits the amount of time we're shorthanded. So that's kind of the idea. So that number is, is accurate, um, but we are actually replacing somebody that's no longer in the budget with another person, so, um, that just shifted to another, another agency or to another, um, line item in there. Equipment allowance, you're gonna see that that's increased fairly significantly. Every year or every few years, we come up with three-to-five-year plans that go in with our equipment. This time, it's some SWAT equipment, uh, some suppressors and some communications for our SWAT team. So we have a three-year plan, we'll be replacing some of that over the next three years, and that's the main reason for that increase in that line. If you look at our software maintenance, you'll see a large decrease. The reason is actually when we did the budget this year for our body-worn camera system, there's a couple ways to the camera systems work. One of them is we buy the system with the, um, cloud storage that we ended up buying, or you buy a camera system and pay for the cloud storage separately. So when we did our budgeting last year, we actually budgeted for the cloud storage separately, but the camera system we bought didn't need that cloud storage. So if we're removing that fifteen thousand dollars from the budget that we won't need, because that's included in the body-worn camera, so that's why that one shows differently. The maintenance general property, we're trying to kind of repurpose our police department. You guys remember from the tour, we were a little cramped for space in places, so we're removing the library area, uh, that is no longer used since everything's digital. Our younger officers wouldn't even know what a library is, probably. Um, so, so we're, every, everything's digital, so we're gonna remove that, we're gonna add a door, we're gonna add a wall on the one side, open it up, and then make that an office space for the corporals, so we'll have a little bit more office space in that area. So we'll spread out our squad room where the majority of our patrol officers will work. They will not all be cramped in the same spot. And then, if you go down to the PD new hire testing, that shows a big jump. Really what happened is in two thousand twenty, or twenty twenty, uh, the police department started paying for our own psychological exams and some of those things that we hire, when we hire somebody rather than HR paying for them. Don't really know why that happened, but it happened. So Steve and I met, we just need to put it in a budget, it doesn't matter whether it's ours or HR's, so we added that to ours. So it's just a new cost that we're now paying that we hadn't in the past. And then the only other thing is that education and training, we, we removed the paid intern program and replaced that with our police recruits, so that did decrease, did decrease our tuition that we were paying for that paid intern, so. Those are the main differences. Of course, there's a few others there, so if you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Your equipment allowance, are you replacing rifles and suppressors?
So.
And this is all for SWAT and the communications is what you're talking?
Yeah, that's the main differences in the cost. I mean, the equipment is, of course, all kinds of things within that, but the main difference for the increase is those, those new items, yes. Suppressors for.
Are the rifles and suppressors?
Yes, those are the major costs of those new items. The, actually, so if we really broke it down and I showed you, I think that's about twenty, a little over twenty thousand dollars, which is more than that difference, but there are things that have dropped off of the program, as I said, we have that replacement that we are no longer paying for, so that dropped off of what we're, of this year, we won't have to pay for it next year, and then we replace that with this, this three-year plan.
What, what are suppressors?
Earplugs for a rifle?
Yeah, essentially for, it's an earplug for the rifle.
Okay.
For these guys that are training a lot and shooting rifles, it's not, obviously not good on there.
Straightjacket or something like that.
Employee recognition for grant?
Yeah.
It's not a previous line item.
Yeah, we, and this is one that Steve and I talked about, we used to use that under miscellaneous expenses. We eliminated the miscellaneous throughout the city, so we're no longer using that. So you'll see there is no miscellaneous on here, we moved it over to recognition expenses, which is, uh, you know, Jared Crohn's retirement, it's gonna be some of those, whether we do the party, which he didn't have, but some of the, the badges and some of those things that we've done for them, that's, that's what those costs are. Oh, another thing that I didn't talk about that we added, that you're gonna see twenty thousand dollars for community events, that was a recent thing. Uh, we did the National Night Out in the past, which is one thousand dollars. Since we're no longer doing National Night Out, we added that. And we picked that number because that's pretty close to what we received in, in revenue coming in this year. So we just have to have that line item, so if we get that money coming in next year, we have an account to spend it out of, so. Uh, we don't expect that to be coming out of taxpayers' money, that's, that's a revenue generator, but we have to have that spot in the budget for it, so. It shows a twenty thousand dollar increase. If we don't get twenty thousand dollars coming in, we won't spend that much.
Custody for prisoners, you got a thousand, is that by Snicker bars or something?
Well, that was, you know, it's, still periodically, we have to do transports. So when we do transport, that's what that would be for, it's, it's pretty rare. Also, hospital bills, if we have somebody that's in custody that goes to hospital, and we end up having to pay that bill, that's, that's kind of that money that's there.
Okay.
We haven't had to spend it for a couple of years, but we keep a little bit there just in case.
So back to my one, are you replacing comms for the communications for the SWAT also?
Yes.
Is it a community-wide SRT program, or?
So, yeah, this is our STAR team that's with, uh, um, Logan County, as well as Sterling, and then our county-wide program. We combine them, but, uh, we, we provide the equipment for our officers, they provide the equipment for their officers, so. So, yeah.
My question.
Right, yeah, it's, they're separate. We all, we all have in our agreement that we pay for our own equipment for our own officers.
Earplugs are cheaper than suppress.
True.
Any other questions for Lauren?
Thanks, thank you.
Okay, the next one on the docket here is the fire department budget, and Trey was unable to be here, so we did include his budget. It's got several notes there. Um, you know, I don't know that I'm gonna go through those all in detail. But, uh, most of the costs are really related to either increased fire calls or the additional employees that they have that are full-time over there, the vehicle technicians that they have. Some concern with, uh, you know, their hose, when they get their hoses checked, they may have some issues, or PPE continues to go up in cost. So those are the main differences in his budget over, over the year previous. Uh, I did meet with Trey, and we went all, over all of these. I certainly have no concerns there. I'm not sure I could answer any questions, but I'd be happy to carry any to him if you have some tonight, and we can bring this back if, if we need to, uh, at the next meeting.
So part of the increase is we brought the, um, dispatchers back.
Correct, yep. Yeah, he calls them, uh, um.
We don't need to know who he called.
But, yeah, but that's, they are, they, they, they live there and, and dispatch and also take care of vehicles during the day, so, yep.
Any other questions for the fire?
Okay. All right, next, we have the, uh, building inspection, and, and Mike's coming back up for that one.
You didn't think you needed to see me again. We enjoy it. Anyway, uh, as Chief had stated, uh, as you'll see that our wage stuff is, and for employees have gone up because we were not only needing to take care of the code-compliant officer position, but also for a future planner. And I'll let Steve and Brent give you more details on the planner part, but it'll be coming out of this budget when that position gets filled. And then you see that we're not paying rent, but the next item down, we have to pay now utilities because we're not, we now in a building that wasn't underneath the electric department anymore, so we didn't have to pay them rent and we have to take care of our own building now. So that's, you'll notice that some of those items that we didn't have or were less in the past are because of the old senior building that we're in, that we have to maintain that building ourselves now. And then the fuel and oil is the other vehicle and then a future vehicle for the planner when that position gets filled. So at that now, with the way the gas prices are going, I don't know if that's going to be enough. So, and then equipment, we, tools and equipment, we upped that a little bit to cover some additional tools and safety equipment for the code-compliance officer plus if the planner needs anything for, I'm not exactly sure. So, but it's mainly for the code-compliant officer, so he can get the shovels and whatever else he needs to protect himself when he's out there doing the trash and whatever. So all I can tell is that God, I don't have to do that. Then the maintenance of vehicles, we upped that. And just, so you know, we had to get new tires for his vehicle and it's going to be around $800 for new tires for his vehicle he has now. So that's a little bit more price here. Mike and I's vehicles are newer, so his is a little older and our mechanic said, he looked at his tires, he's having problems with his tires and now he needs new tires, so we're going to have to do that. Other than that, the general maintenance property, that's also the line item so we can maintain the building we're in and needs to have whatever maintenance we need for that building. Basically, then training, we added a little bit more for training to take, for the code-compliance officer and if the planner needs any training and stuff, so we added some money in to help accommodate that. And other than that, then oh, the last one is the, that's through data processing and ops equipment. So that's the, whatever stuff we need for the planner when he shows up or whoever that person is shows up, get them up and running with whatever phones and stuff that they may need. And that the code-compliance officer kind of took over. Some of that might have to be reshuffled and we may need to get, we need to get more stuff. We don't have enough desks and phones and stuff like that. Other than that, if you have any other questions, I'll try to answer them if you, if I didn't cover everything.
Might ask, Brent, if you want to come up and just talk briefly about the planner position and the need for that versus what we used to have a assistant city engineer. So we're making a shift there a little bit in that position.
Yeah, just to hit on that real quick, when Steve had me step into the public works role, we kind of did a reevaluation of the needs and some of the employees that we currently had. I felt that one of the areas that does require a lot of time is over the planning and zoning of the building department. And we've talked about adding planners to that position before. And so it seemed to kind of free up a little bit of my workload. We didn't feel there was a need to create a director's position, but a planner's position seemed a little more relevant. And so we're looking at hiring a planner for that department that will oversee my building inspectors and everything, and that person would report to me. But I also felt that I wasn't need, of need of a, an assistant, you know, city engineer, and that's what Derek Mills was. Derek moved on, he took a job in Texas and moved back to where he had spent some time before. And so we just felt that we're just kind of shuffling the positions around. I think it was more needed to have somebody in that planning and zoning department as a planner. That is a, especially right now in the city of Fort Morgan is a, you know, high-demand position. There's a lot of my time that's being spent on meetings with Mike and everything to sit down and have discussions with people. And it would just be easier to have that finer person in there to take that part of the workload and not replace Derek's position.
I don't want to blindside either of you guys, but, and I don't think tonight's topic that we started out the meeting with was a surprise to anybody. But I've seen the weed issue throughout the community, everywhere I go, whether it be on commercial property or residential. I know when I was in law enforcement in the city, the officers assigned quadrants and you had a lot of officers to address a large area. And now we're asking one person to do that. And I'm not sure that a one-person compliance officer can address all the needs of follow-up and enforcement. And I think it's something we probably need to look at because we're not keeping up this year. I hate to start out 2022 and halfway through the year go, oh, we should hire somebody. So I really think we probably need to look at addressing it now for 2022 so we don't have another year like we are right now for weed enforcement, street alleys, all that.
And I'm more than happy to have that conversation. I've since been made aware that the police, you know, department spent more man-hours helping. I was made to believe that this was just a one-person job when we started this. I think Dustin is doing a remarkable job.
I'm not, I'm not here to say that, I'm sorry. I don't mean to say that at all.
And a lot of it's him learning where the limits and the boundary is. And Dustin's a nice guy and he's trying to work with people. And that's, I think, got him a little more bogged down. But I will also comment on the amount of moisture that we had this spring. We had an incredible amount of moisture in the spring that basically just compounded the weed problem that we're seeing. I know that's not an excuse, but it's put him behind the eight ball. And so I'm more than happy to have the discussion about, do we need to add more money to this budget to do what we're doing?
Well, I think you're, I don't think John was bringing that up against Dustin or...
Yeah, I know it isn't.
His point is that there was a lot of people doing that and now we have just Dustin doing all of his, all of that, and it's overwhelming. And to Dustin's defense, I believe, is what we're pointing at. So what, tell us what each one of the two code enforcements, what are their responsibilities? Because they were both under the PD, we've changed them, so, and that was just recently, this year. So what is Dustin's duties and what's he's, what has he got on his plate? And what does your code enforcement have on his?
So I can kind of answer that. To John's point, yes, we did that. We haven't done that in several years.
I haven't been there for a while.
We've used two code enforcement officers to do both parking, traffic, I mean, parking, weeds, those types of things, but also animal control. So what we did, we really found about half of the time, probably even more than half of the time, that those two guys were spending throughout a year is going to be in animal control. That being said, over the summer, there's a lot more going on in that time. And I think that's really what, where we kind of maybe missed the mark of what we were thinking. Because if you look at the calls for service throughout the year, there's going to be more animal control and parking violations than there are anything else. But if you're looking over a two- or three-month period, that's where the majority of Dustin's work is going to come. Then when the weeds are gone, Dustin's work is going to decrease significantly. So I think that's where in the past, we had two people working, sharing the workload more so in the summer with the weeds and then also doing the animal control. Does that make sense? I don't think there's an increase, it's just that it's not, the animal control numbers and parking numbers are going to be consistent throughout the year, weeds are not. There's not going to be as much snow on the sidewalk and you certainly don't have weeds all winter long. You're going to have a three-month timeframe where the majority of those calls are coming, and that's right now.
The other thing that we have Dustin do, since he's under the building department, is he's also responsible for all the Chapter 20 violations and things that he sees. And Dustin, having the experience that he does, coming from being a building official for the county, he recognizes a lot of things now where people aren't getting permits and are doing work without, you know, proper documentation and stuff. And so that is also under his purview is to make sure that those things are being complied with too. And so right now, double whammy, it's the busiest time of the year probably in our construction business. And so he's also doing, you know, those type of stops and checks too. And so, so it's, we've been able to add a little more to his position because of his expertise, but it's also something that we need to have done as part of the building department. Because Mike and Mike, who are two, you know, inspectors, they're going from inspection to inspection to inspection to inspection when they're out there. And they're not able to really keep an open eye on contractors that are doing things that they shouldn't be doing. Where Dustin is checking this weed, you know, checking this nuisance problem. Hey, look, there's a guy putting windows in, doesn't have any stickers on them, probably didn't get a permit. Better stop and talk to him. And then next thing we know, they're in our office getting a permit and taking care of it, so.
So John, I'll just jump into, and so specifically to answer your question, you know, the police department code enforcement's dealing with animal control and parking issues. Dustin's dealing with weeds, junk, rubbish, you know, nuisance things, Chapter 20 violations. I'll be honest, today is only Tuesday and I feel like I've spent a week already today just dealing with weeds and junk and other issues. It is a massive job and I don't think any of us realize just how much of a job it was going to be for Dustin and one man. And I can tell you, I saw him today and he looked like he'd been hit by a bus. He was pretty wore out. So I think we're all happy to entertain a conversation about, do we need additional employees helping there? Or is there some other way we can, we can get some assistance to tackle the problem? Because we are, you know, he's keeping his head above water, but it is barely above the water some days. And I worry deeply about him. And Brent and I had a conversation about that today after I'd seen Dustin and had a conversation with him. So I think we're certainly open for some further direction and certainly, and Lauren and I are going to chat about how we can help better too because it is, and to, you know, today and yesterday were two pretty rough days when it comes to weeds and junk and those kinds of things, so.
Well, if I could, just came from that world and, you know, June would come and supervisors meeting would end up and daytime sergeants would get the duty for taking care of weeds. Because it is extremely overwhelming and I think for Dustin, you know, the last thing he thought is, what did I just step in? You know, and I don't want to overwhelm him because he's a good guy, come from the county. I think we got a good employee. But when we did it, there was, let me go back, five, or five patrolmen, including a sergeant for every shift. So that's two-day shifts, that's 10 plus two code enforcement, that's 12 people. And we've dumped it on one. And I think that is just, it's just a bad mix for him. He's going to go, and I don't want that. And I think as the city, if this is a priority, and obviously it is, we need to step up and help this man, or otherwise we're going to lose a good employee.
I, going back to your budget, you said that parking and animal control is what you have, but you have $25,000 for blighted property?
Yes, because we still, I believe we still working those. That's kind of that, what really kind of changed everything was when the charter still put some of this, most of this under the city manager's responsibility, but it was being handled in the police department. So we're still kind of all over the place on that one. Blight, we're still helping assist, but we don't have full responsibility for it. That really kind of falls under the city manager as well, but we're still helping out with those situations. So that's kind of, we can move that money over too. It doesn't matter on my end, but that's kind of where the issue is.
Well, I guess for the time being, so that we don't wear them both out, is there a where, an area where they can work cohesively till we get this? I mean, because you've got the blight money in your budget, $25,000. And, you know, I don't want either one of them being run rampant, but they work together. It's a transition thing from when the charter changed to we passed. And this is just one item that is going to need some refinement. So I guess at this point, you know, I've had numerous phone calls and sounds of it. Everybody else has. And, you know, we're not hitting the code enforcement guys. We're empathetic with them that they're being run rampant. And if we can have them working together, it's all general fund money.
Certainly, and Steve and I talked about this before the meeting tonight. We plan on having a conversation tomorrow about it. To be clear, the blight money is actually, 2020, we had a house where they wouldn't clean it up and we had to pay for contractors to come clean it up. That's what that's actually for, those people that refuse or the weed people that refuse to clean up their trash or their weeds and we have to hire somebody. That's where that money comes from. There's a whole legal process and that's where that's coming from.
Do we still have our on-call individuals that go and do snow removal or take care of the blighted?
Yes, and that's another thing that we have and that we've been doing, going out to bid on. It's a three-year bid, we have both of those. So, yeah, that's another part where we're still taking care of that side of it.
I think, you know what would be helpful for us and maybe we can bring this back. I don't know that I want to make this decision tonight, but perhaps a meeting with Lauren and Brent and I and we can sit down and discuss this and then perhaps at the next meeting we can come back. But, you know, I understand the collaboration, but if we're separating those, you know, at some point, Lauren's, you know, we either need to hire another person or not. And so I think that's what we'll talk about is, you know, do we hire another code compliance officer to help with weeds and junk and some of those things that would be in the, in the building department budget? And that way Lauren can be separate and that gentleman can deal with the animal control and so on. But I can't hire 12. I heard the number 12. And that would be tough, I think. I think it would be really challenged to even propose that. But, you know, certainly those, those summer months, maybe it's a couple of part-time or seasonal, which are really hard to find anyway, or something. But I think maybe we can have some more conversation and perhaps bring that back to the next meeting about this is what we decided, how do you feel about that? And we'll have some numbers to go with it so that you guys can evaluate that.
And I think that's the key. We can, we can sit down and look at it. And like I said, we have been doing it with two people for seven or eight years. We haven't been using 12 for a long time.
Yeah.
But, but it is that, exactly what we're talking about. There's a large number of calls that come now, even though if we look at the number of calls over a year, animal control and parking control probably be more, but it is spread out for the entire year where if you hire full-time people, is that really the best thing to do in the winter months? And that's, I don't know the answer to that. Those numbers, we can pull those numbers and try to, try to look at that and see if that's the appropriate way to do it.
Your Honor, I have a comment to make. I've been working closely with this. I think too, it's been so bad for a couple of years, there's been a lot of trash and people are in a bad habit, I've found. And so right now, tackling that and getting them in the habit, I was under the assumption that Dustin, that was all he was going to do. I didn't realize he had all this other job. So it's so bad, I would agree to maybe hire someone or have you guys work things out. But I think eventually it will get better when people do have to pay and get some tickets on it and have a standard set by the city. And then I think it'll get better. We'll always have the problem, but it's, the people are really upset about it and it looks terrible. It's a bad reflection on us. So good luck with your conversation, but I would be in favor of using the police if that's what you all decide, or at least, or maybe even hiring another one. So I'm in favor of either one, whatever you guys work out, what would work the best. So soon as possible.
Yeah, thank you, that's helpful. Yeah, thank you, that's, that's helpful.
Remember one man when he goes on vacation, I've been there.
Yep.
Yeah.
Absolutely. You always get to bring that up, don't you?
I commend, I commend, uh, Glamour for trying a new system. It's always good to try to tackle a problem in another way that didn't work in the past. And it's bound now to have the flaws show up where it's not working. So I think it's a good time to go in there and, and fix it and keep right on going. But thank you for hiring a new person and tackling it.
Yeah, and give some credit to Lauren. I mean, we had this conversation very early on, but, um, yeah, I, I do think there are some, it, it, things have been going well. It's just now we're in the thick of it and, uh, you know, it is, it's, it's a massive job. And, um, I think we realize that it's, it's more than just one person can tackle.
And please let Dustin know this, absolutely not an attack. We're trying to help him. No, okay, we'll let him know.
Yep. Other questions, uh, just on the building department budget as presented then? Okay, well, we'll bring this one back with some additional information so that we can tackle that piece, um, at the next meeting. Let's see, next we have municipal court, so Jason's here for that one.
Your honor, counsel.
Evening.
Evening. Um, if I may comment real quick before I get to my budget, actually on Dustin. Actually, just in my neighborhood, there were about three or four homes that were looking pretty rough. And I actually, I just reached out to Dustin just like he asked at one of our managers' meetings, couple of months ago, I suppose, three. And, um, he actually contacted each one of those homes that were in that area and just stopped by my house and just asked me, um, if he could step onto my property to look in the backyard of the other person, just because he couldn't see everything from the street. Said fine, and all three of those, three of the homes, no, actually all four of the homes have actually been addressed over this last weekend and last night.
Mm-huh.
So sometimes it's just a comment and to say, hey, uh, get this cleaned up. Sometimes the tickets aren't needed to be issued.
Ninety-nine percent of it is just putting something on the door and saying, cleaning it up.
Right.
Sorry, now back to this one, then, I'm sorry. Uh, on our, on my budget, there's not much that has changed from the previous year, from 2021, or 2021, um, which is the current year, I guess. Uh, the janitorial, we left the same, even though that's good, that's actually, we had a bid that was actually just a little bit less. So we kept it just that way for the simple fact that we don't know if something a little bit larger might happen down there in the court. Hasn't yet, but you never know. Uh, the only other change was something that, uh, Steve Glamour had mentioned that we wanted to try to get rid of some, some of the miscellaneous. So we actually found that the miscellaneous that we had had to do with our, uh, court interpreting language line. So now that's the only thing that you see on there that you probably wouldn't have seen from the previous year.
Is that other contracted labor?
Say what?
Is that your other contracted labor?
No, it's actually down, um, it's, let's say be seven from the bottom. It says interpreter services.
Thirty-two.
Oh, yeah. And that previously was miscellaneous, that's all we had in there was the interpreter services. So let's we'll call it interpreter.
Yeah, miscellaneous just bothers me because it's kind of a place to hide things. I don't mean that we're trying to hide anything. It's just if we're going to spend the money and we know what we're spending on, let's call a spade a spade and call it what it is. And so I'm just trying to clean those up and eliminate these miscellaneous accounts and all of these funds and put the money, allocate the money where it is being spent or what it's being spent on.
I like that.
Kudos on that.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
That's all I have.
Any questions?
What are credit card fees?
Credit card fees? Well, when somebody comes in and pays services such as any of their fines and fees. And then they run a credit card, we get charged.
Oh, okay, okay, I see, I see. So it's just, it's a fee that the credit card company changes, charges you, okay.
As a vendor, they charge you a percentage.
Of course, of course, of course.
They do that.
I thought that was pushed over to the consumer, but I guess not.
No.
Whatever.
We still have to keep rushing it.
I see, I see, okay. No problem. I just, I just saw it there.
Yeah, no, that's a good question, uh, just because data processing and credit card fees.
If you go to the courthouse, uh, county court, you pay for your plates, you put it on your credit card, you have to pay two or three percent additional fee.
Yeah.
So why aren't we doing that there? So we're not actually, uh, Caesar's not paying the.
Yeah, let me tackle that one. It's because we use the same company for everything. So if we're going to do that, then we are also doing it on utility bills and everything. And we can certainly do that, we've just never passed that cost on. We've eaten that cost and the utility bills are probably the biggest place where we have credit card expenses.
You know what I'm going to ask next then, don't you? Are you going to give us a report on how that comes out? How much comes through those credit card? So we'll see what a percentage is that we say he's eating?
We, we certainly can and, and each budget will have a credit card fee line item in it. So the utility billing would already have it in there and you would see what that number is.
All right.
Um, golf course, credit cards as well, um, just any place that we would accept a credit card. We have historically, um, just, uh, funded that fee through our budget. We certainly could go the other direction.
I guess that's a double-edged sword on, I, I understand what you're saying.
But what you say.
We actually get the fees when they use their credit card as opposed to.
But I believe it's a lump sum, if I'm correct. It's, it's split up so like finance gets billed a certain amount. It, it's pretty much the exact same each month and I believe that's the way. The court is as well, or at the library, I believe it's the same dollar amount for the entire year.
Yeah.
And so I think that's why, and I'm just trying to throw this two bit, two cents out, that I think when people, you go into some of these businesses and they'll say, uh, credit card for minimum of $5 or $8 or more, that makes sense because they need to recoup that 3% or 2% that they're actually, they're being charged.
Each department gets charged according to the usage, you can see that. I mean, we budget a whole number, but it, each year you'll see that there's an actual number and there's $1,203.67 or so on. But it is to the same company for all funds and so that's, I think that's, I mean, that was all in place before. Certainly I sat in this chair, but I think that's why historically we've eaten that.
It's a little hard to eat $12,000 to golf courses.
Right.
And that's what you're, you're showing.
I get it.
Okay.
Yep.
That just seems like a lot when you start adding it up.
Certainly, uh, something we could discuss and, and happy to take direction on, uh, passing that cost on to the consumer. I, I would just, uh, you know, again, recognize the largest one of those is the utility billing. Yeah, and that's probably, I don't have that number in front of me, but I would venture to guess it's a pretty big number. And a lot of people pay their utility bills with their credit cards.
Yeah, I know, I know for a fact when you go to get your license and pay with a credit card, they do add that extra charge on there.
Yep.
I just tried to pay my, uh, my plumbing bill, which is quite large for a new furnace. I wanted to put on my credit card to get sky miles, but they charge you 5% extra.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, sorry. But I, I, I saw it there and I just.
Yep, no, that's like I said, it's a good.
That was kind of odd and I, I thought that was just naturally passed on, but evidently not.
See what you started, Bill?
Yeah, I know, I know. I should have just stayed home.
Oh, it's fine, it's a good question to ask. Any other questions for Jason on municipal court budget? All right, thanks, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
I'm going to invite Brent up to do streets. I think JW was unable to be here tonight, so Brent's going to tackle that next one.
Yes, thank you. Um, pretty straightforward, there was a few small categories that we reduced. Um, these are in line with what Steve was, um, asking. If we weren't using it to go ahead and back some of those things off. Um, JW did have three categories though that we did want to increase. Um, he's looking for another $50,000 in his street maintenance line item. I think this is kind of a, he needs a little more maintenance money to go, um, to take care of some of the more run-of-the-mill stuff. And that doesn't go with the strictly for streets projects. And because of the increased prices of asphalt and concrete and all that stuff, he would like to boost that up to 200,000. Um, he, um, is asking for a increase in his fuel and oil. As I think everybody's aware, gas prices continue to creep up on us. And then the last one that you guys don't see, um, on this, and I'm just bringing to you tonight because we didn't have the number until just recently, under tools and equipment, which is just right after fuel and oil. Traditionally, they've just had $3,000 in there to replace tools and stuff in the department. Um, we've been made aware that some of the tools they've been using in the department were, um, personally owned, not actually owned by the city. And so Steve has asked us to go ahead and put the proper amount of money in there for this one year to, um, get those privately owned tools out of our, you know, basically our use and let the city just buy what is being used for city use. And so, um, appreciate the fact that the employees have been, you know, bringing those things in to use them when they needed them. But there's no need when all we needed was an additional $12,000 to cover the purchase of all that. So, so we're looking to raise that, um, that tool and equipment line item to $15,000 in next year's budget. And then it'll go back down to around 3,000 in future years, once we get those tools purchased, so.
Yeah, the big concern for me there is certainly the liability. Having somebody's personal tools in our shop, um, is just a concern for me on a number of levels, whether they would disappear and then we would end up having to not only replace the employees' tools, but then buy tools for the city to use. Um, if somebody got injured from a tool that wasn't purchased by the city, there's just issues. And, and it was a real concern for me. Um, so I talked to Brent, JW, uh, Bob Covey about it. And I think it's just time to get them the tools, uh, the toolboxes and, and the things that they have and get those into the cities, uh, under the insurance, the city's insurance and, and our liability and get them away from the personal liability of the employee. So it's a one-time, uh, expense, smaller than I thought. I thought it'd be in the $20,000 range, so I'm happy to hear it's only 12. There's a lot of tools in there.
So all the tools?
Not all of them, he's been slowly replacing tools, um, and, and the city's been buying things that may break or whatever. And, and so he's got them separated in the shop, but there's a, there's two or three toolboxes, I believe, that are personal and, uh, tools in them that are personal. So it's, there's, there's a good amount of them for sure. Yeah. I wouldn't aware of that until we took the tour.
Yeah. And it is a standard practice with some larger employers. I know Western Sugar has mechanics that do work for them all the time that own all of the tools. They're not owned by Western Sugar. So it's not that this is an unheard of practice, but Steve has made a lot of good points. When I saw the number two, I was more than happy to come in and ask for the 12,000 extra just to get that issue resolved.
Do they get to pick the tool that they want, that they're used to using? Would, would the city buy some less than what they?
No, no, he, he, he would, he would tell us what he's looking for and, and we would replace him like, for like, um, he, he seems to be separating to Milwaukee, I think, over something that he has, but he likes Milwaukee. So, you know, we, we don't get involved in, in the nuts and bolts that way, but certainly we'll get him what, uh, what he prefers to use, yeah.
Well, I'm sure he runs it through JW, uh, when he has expense like that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So it's, it's, it's not like he's just out to buy whatever.
Right, right.
Correct. Hi, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have the library museum, so Chandra's here for that, I think. Did I skip one? I skipped one, I'm sorry. No, streets, yeah, then library museum, I have you next on my list.
I'm Mr. New.
On this, it's that way, on that one, it's the other way.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry. Um, so I don't have a whole lot of changes, uh, for 2022. You will notice that there's an increase in salaries. That's due to the fact that we added a third part timer this year. So we'll keep that for, for next year. So that's where that increase is coming in. Um, the next, uh, increase you'll see is in our software maintenance line. We're looking at, um, going with a new company for our museum cataloging software because they have an online component, component that keeps our, um, collection a little bit safer and, uh, you know, won't be risked, there won't be the risk of losing the cataloging and it opens us up to a lot of options for museum researchers and patrons. Um, but there will be a cost associated with that with the migration. Um, the other increase that you'll see is in the grant expenses. The state library is offering another non-competitive grant this year. So we've applied for that, um, or for next year. And then I have, um, decreased a little bit in the education and training. It seems more and more that, um, the conferences we attend and educational opportunities are not, no longer in person due to COVID. So we're thinking that we won't need nearly as much in that line. Um, and then the last increase that you'll see is in our dues and subscriptions and that's because of the cost of our newspapers. Um, that's, runs on a three-year cycle. Um, some, some newspapers is two-year cycle, so we have to increase it and decrease it depending on that cycle, so. But that's about the only changes that I have. Do you have any questions?
And mine's just back to the grant expense.
Mm-huh.
What is expense? I know you said that you're, so you're applying for the grant and its expenses incurred.
Yeah.
To be able to present your application or?
Uh, no, there, there are two, they have two non-competitive grants. So any library that applies for them will get these grants. The first one, um, that we applied for, we, we get every year and has been going on for a long time. And that one's for library materials and you can also use it for eBooks and e-materials. This new one is for, um, COVID-related expenses for libraries and, um, you know, libraries coming up with more innovative ways to reach out to their patrons during COVID so that we can help people who may still be hesitant to be in public and, um, other purposes as well, social distancing, that kind of thing, so.
Yeah, so specifically Kevin, what we'll do is we'll receive that money, it'll show up on the revenue side and then Chandra will spend on this side for those items that the grant would cover. So, yeah.
Now, now I can do it, see, he knows he has to make it really simple for me.
Any questions?
All right, thanks, Chandra.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, Golf Pro Shop Adams here for that one, or Ty, I don't know.
Good evening, mayor and counsel and staff. All right, feel free, feel free to, uh, make any observations as I work through the highlights. So I'm going to start with, uh, our advertising budget. We were at 5,000 this year and we're asking for 7,500. And this is mainly goes to, uh, targeted ads that we do through social media to bring awareness, uh, on the front range to golfers kind of wanting to get out of Denver and they're playing five-hour rounds up there. So a lot of course, or a lot of players up there aren't aware of what we have here at Quail Dunes. And so this budget allows me to target them through, uh, zip codes, their interests, their hobbies. And so it's really effective. We've been doing that this year with the budget, so I'd like to increase it moving forward.
You found that it's effective?
Yeah, the analytics that we're getting and the data, um, I've been sharing it with Ty and, um, it's pretty cool stuff. And it's something I've done in the past and so just being able to move it into this.
This will be kind of a market, more of a marketing thing?
Yeah, exactly, yep. Very targeted. All right, uh, cost of sales for the snack bar, uh, we were at 30,000, we're moving that to 40,000. Um, in 2020, we were at 39,000. So even though we have an increase in sales this year, we're already at, uh, I believe 44,000 for this year, uh, year-to-date. Last year we were at, um, 72,000. So that's just the cost of sales. So it's usually about 30% less than our, than our total year-end. The junior golf and special events budget, that was at 6,000. We've chosen to reduce that to 2,500. Um, I don't, not sure if all of you are aware, but there was a foundation that was started, the Morgan County Junior Golf Association. And they're very supportive of junior golf in Morgan County and northeastern Colorado. And so they've been funding some of. And so they've been funding some of our efforts. And I didn't feel that the 6,000 was needed, um, because as you can see, it was something that we wanted to make a focus. But once we were able to, uh, create this foundation, it's really helped us out moving forward. Stay and Play Hotel. Stay and Play is our relationship we have with area hotels. And much like, uh.
Looks like the grant situation.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I see, I see.
Yeah. So it's not, it, it comes in and then we just spend it out of there.
Okay.
Thank you. Office supplies and expenses moving from 1,000 to 1,750. Um, I just, I've, I've struggled getting some of the office supplies we need and, uh, felt it need to be, uh, increased. Uh, here's what, here's what you might notice. Uh, this is the second year that golf maintenance and golf shop operations has been separated. And this year we've been working out of the same general maintenance of property fund. So anything that is in regards to the golf shop and maintenance, it's all coming out of the same. And it's been a challenge to get the things we need to take care of at, at the golf shop operation. So moving forward, we'll have our own maintenance of property budget. And then the general maintenance practice facility, this will be to enhance the, the range experience so that we can have targets out there and then be able to maintain, um, that facility with that, within that budget. Uh, the janitorial is moving from 5,000 to 7,000. Um, that is pretty much conducive to a relationship we're starting with Centos so that they can provide us with aprons for the food and beverage side, also mats around the clubhouse. And then they also have a really cool and effective cleaning system that we use for our cart fleet management. So our carts are about five years old. And so cleaning them properly will, you know, keep up with the wear and tear on them as they're getting, as they're aging. Maintenance of golf carts. We started this year, uh, changing out some of the seats. So we have three barns that we keep all the carts in. There's about 15 in each barn. And, uh, this year we did 15 of those seats. We reupholstered them, uh, through a local, uh, business here. And so we'd like to continue to do that process. A lot of the seats are cracking, um, and so this is just keep them from totally ripping apart.
Yeah, that's, it's just maintenance, right?
Yeah, exactly. And windows, windows are cracking. Those windows are $200 a piece to replace a window. And there's nothing more annoying than that window just going click, 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 click.
We don't lease those carts. We own them, right?
We do own them, yes.
We do now. We made our last payment.
Yep. Um, cost of sales pro shop, that just is increased to 50,000. Um, we have got increasing sales and so we don't really, we don't need that, but we spend it as we're selling, right? Just having merchandise in there for the public. Any questions?
And, and see the credit card fees went from 6,000 to 12,000. If somebody in the, in your office would just shout out, charge them double a little bit more frequently, we could probably cover that.
Right? So I think the actual in 2020 was close to 11,000. And so I think the 12,000 is just getting us more of an accurate budget in there.
It's just hard to know what that fee is going to be because it's really based on how many people come and use credit cards. So you can see that in 2019, it was only fixed 5,600. And through the end of April, the year-to-date there is 1150. So it's just hard to know. And so I think just, uh, budgeting to cover that 2020 makes some sense. But, um, yeah, it just depends. And I will just kind of a teaser, Ty and I talked a little bit today, um, and looked at some numbers for the golf course and it's done very well, better than last year at this time. And so, um, we're pretty excited about that. And we are seeing a lot of play up there and a lot of folks, uh, coming in and testimony to, to Adam and, and his team for the marketing and, and all of that. But, uh, um, yeah, I think that's a good thing, but you're right. I mean, those, those fees, they, they go up when, when people come and, and do that, so.
Steve, that, that's kind of interesting for I, you saying that. So out of that 467,000, how much of that actually comes back? You know, that's our cost. So is it 50,000?
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah. So I think what you're asking me is what kind of subs does he even?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So typically, I mean, it's a little bit, you talk about it right now, because pro shop is separated from maintenance, right? When I was at, at the golf course, our total budget was around $900,000. Um, we usually brought in around 450 to 470,000. So we run about a 50% subsidy, which I think is pretty typical for most municipal golf courses. The exciting thing this year, and a lot of it is due to COVID. COVID rejuvenated the golf business. Last year was one of our best years. This year is even better. We've already brought in 453,000 in revenue this year. And we've got what, four or five months left? Uh, we probably have six, eight weeks of really good business still before we start dying down. So this may be one of the best, it'll be the best year I've seen since I've moved here to this golf course and maybe that the course has seen in a long time. And it, it's not just because of Adam's efforts with the targeted marketing, which I think has been great, but it's, it's a big part to Matt Underwood and the golf course group, Matt Givens, um, Terry Eaton. Eric, the product is so good right now that it, the more people we can get from the front range, the better the word amount. And all those things you see are going to go up because the more people that come in the door, the more beer we're selling, the more food, the more carts, you know? So your credit card fees are going to go up. Your pro shop costs of goods are going to go up. Your food and beverage is going to go up. At the same time, your revenue is going up. It's all a good problem to have.
Thank you. I always, I always wondered how that.
No, it's a good question. And I can tell you historically, the golf course in Delta was right out of 50% subsidy year over year. And I, and I think Ty's right. I think that's just a trend in municipal courses.
Been that way?
That's just the way they are. Yeah.
Yeah. Fifty percent is actually pretty good.
Yeah, it is. Yeah.
Are you seeing like an increase in your pro shop sales and?
Yep. Uh, this year, last year we were at 45,000 for the year. And this year we're already at 44,000 year-to-date, so. We've sold, we've sold less items. We've sold 2,500 items to date right now at 44,000. Last year we sold 3,400 items at $45,000. So.
There's a crease.
Yep.
Well, and you kind of hit it. If you try and get a tee time and on the front range courses, good luck, plan it well in advance.
Yeah.
Plan on spending the entire day playing.
Yeah. The experience we can provide people out here is, people are starting to notice. So it's exciting to be a part of.
Thank you. We have a good product.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a bad thing.
That's a bad thing, but it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Other questions for Adam on the golf pro shop side?
None for me.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Adam. Well, we'll tackle the golf maintenance side then and Matt's in the back, back there, so.
Easy. I'd like to start out by saying, yeah, weeds suck.
Don't disagree.
I mean, I feel everyone's pain. We've kind of been a struggling as well, so, but.
Touche.
Sorry. Mine's a little all over right now.
Your budget looks good, thank you.
I wish it was that easy. So golf maintenance obviously helping in the room as you look at it, uh, is the salary and wages. Um, interesting thing is for what I, you know, what's the largest turf operation we run and the most specialized? Crazy thing is we don't have a full-time employee whose job is to operate equipment. We don't have a full-time guy who, you're supposed to be on a mower. Uh, right now we have, with the loss of seasonal staff, I have three full-time employees, uh, irrigation tech and mechanic and Matt Givens, who's my turf whisperer. And, uh, I'm a little nervous. We got a lot of turf left to cut and it's a, it's a grind. Sorry. So what you're seeing is a reflection of that. Um, I could say it's probably my greed. I just want to get the guys the help they can to where we continue to grow the product. Uh, there's none of us that'll sit there and say that the turnaround in the golf is our doing because if it turns the other way, we don't want it to be our fault either. So, uh, we'll give Adam Blake all the credit on that one. Good job, Adam. But that's, that's where that's coming from is you'll see that reflective. The rest of the stuff, which is going to be a common theme for not only golf cemetery as well as when dough comes up here for parks, is fuel drives everything in the turf industry. Um, what do you make fertilizer with? The urea, which is coming from the fuel, the chemical, the shipping costs. We've already been notified by all of our major turf suppliers, Toro, John Deere, that they're having 5% increases for anything and everything. So a lot of what you see in the, um, popular line items is reflecting that. You'll notice fuel and oil up. You'll notice maintenance of equipment and vehicle. Gosh, just to get something shipped here when you need to get it fixed is crazy right now. As well as, you know, well, chemicals and fertilizer. Uh, sprinkler maintenance, obviously with an older system, that's up slightly with two grand. As well as you'll notice, uh, the telephone is up. I just dropped the ball on that one. I didn't realize two employees were getting the stipends. The last year I was like, I'm covered. And then this year when I was over in February, I was like, oh. So that's really what we're looking at here. Um, it's a budget I feel good about that's going to start to stabilize us. But more importantly, it's one that we can build off of to try and not only maintain and give Adam the best product to promote, but also hopefully to start pushing ourselves to improve some. And, uh, like I said, that's really where I'm at on that one. If there's any questions, I'd, you have to answer. And while I'm up here, if we're cool, just dropping over to the cemetery?
Yeah. Do you have any questions for, for Matt on golf maintenance? And we can go a couple pages ahead to cemetery and tackle it.
I just got a comment. Yeah, I'd like to ask you a question as far as, you know, where you're talking about two FTEs.
Yes, sir.
And I know that, you know, you said you don't have anybody that's full-time mowing, but, um, I know you mostly do the mowing and it's mostly seasonal staff, right? Of course, I know that that's been really difficult this year or whatever and stuff. So I was just trying to figure out, is it mowing? I mean, how much mowing do you do during the winter?
Well, considering our, you're correct. We obviously aren't out mowing the snow in the winter. Um, we'll have a three-month season, you know, golf season, obviously. Handicap season alone is March 15th to nine, uh, to, uh, November 15th. So you really have that November to February window where then we're turning around and that staff's going to be utilized in a variety of other areas. We are, our winter preparations will take the remainder of December. Then come December, we're going to be sitting there and whether we can run water, running water trucks. We have a massive amount of deferred maintenance as far as trees repairs like that. We have an ongoing cart path problem that needs to be addressed. So that's where a lot of that winter time labor comes in.
Okay.
As far as that goes. I mean, I've been asked that a lot since I've been at cemetery, even, you know, when I was at cemetery, even before golf maintenance, I was like, what do you do during the winter? Cemetery, it's an easier answer. I'd love to say people only die during the summer, but it's not the case. But out there, I'd sit there and probably answer that with, that'd be an indictment on me as a manager if the guys aren't still earning their pay 12 months a year by getting that staff. It's my job to make sure that they're earning their pay, that we're getting things accomplished. The amount of deferred maintenance is crazy. In the year alone that we've been in there, the stuff we've been able to tackle, being able to do it. So we'd be doing that. And even past that, partnership with parks is a big thing moving forward. We all know we have a massive tree problem throughout the town and there's only so much maintenance that can get to that point. So if we have extra bodies that we can turn around and be shuffling as far as an interdepartmentment agreement, if you will, not a, you know, nothing official, but as far as like, hey, so I got the guys for a month or two. But the crazy thing is, is our winter, it doesn't feel like a winter. We got, we've got December, we've got January, February, we're pulling mats, straw mats. We're getting everything set back up for an early golf season and that's what it is. But it's a good question, one that I get asked all the time. But again, I'd stress, I'd always ask, don't hold it against my guys, hold me accountable for that. If you want to make sure people are earning their wages and that we're getting the work out of them, uh, that's on me. And I'd like to think that in my short time with the city, that, uh, it's something that I've done a solid job of. And believe me, they'll, will work, will get the most out of them.
Have no doubt.
No doubt. No doubt.
Any other questions? Nope. So.
All right. Yeah, we'll just go back, uh, forward a couple of pages to the cemetery budget and let Matt tackle that one too while he's up there.
So we might as well keep the theme with Matt being greedy and not wanting to work. The salary wages line item is the one that really has a, uh, jump. What I'm looking to do is replace the seasonal labor with one full-time position and move away from that. I've, uh, in five years, I have not been able to come close to full staffing at the cemetery. A lot of what it is, is just a very physical job that's extremely difficult to get, you know, a kid to do it for two months or three months. Um, there's a lot of other departments that have more attractive options for, uh, you know, I hate to throw the millennial card out there, but we ain't got any in the crowd, so for millennials. It's difficult to, uh, an operation that requires six people to safely do the stuff between digs. It's difficult to do that with four guys 10 months out of the year and only two. Uh, same premise. People pass away all winter. We have snow routes as well. The big thing with that too is digging a simple cremation grave, which takes an hour of time during the summer, can take up to three to four hours during the middle of winter between shipping. So that's really what that would reflect is the opportunity to be able to provide some stability, knowing that we can yearn and year out, try and maintain the expectation of care. I'm not going to lie, this, maybe I, I just don't want to lessen my expectations nor the expectations of those who have appreciated the work that the guys and the staff have put in over the last five, six years. So that's really what it's about is being able to know we have five trained people year-round. I'd be willing to move away from the six-person model and we can do that successfully. And so that's really what that reflects there. Um, other than that, we have a, um, small uptake in overtime expense. You know, that has a lot to do with weekend burials out of our control, 30-year irrigation system, and then the staff, staff shortages. And then everything else you'll see along the same lines as the fuel items. Small raised deferred in chemical, uh, small raised to maintenance of equipment. You know, we operate 24 vital pieces of equipment at cemetery. We had a, we have a budget right now of nine grand. It takes a thousand dollars just to service our Baco on an annual basis. So that money disappears quick, just in regular routine maintenance. And we also have a data processing increase. That was a, I was directed by finance to, you know, add money to that because we're going to be getting the cemetery casell module up and that's our portion of that. That's our portion of that cost. So everything else, I'm sure I skipped over some stuff. Again, I'm just still thinking about the weeds. So ask me any questions and I'm happy to answer.
Does anybody have any questions? Just one, Matt. So when, if I can remember, most of this stuff comes through the mortuary, right?
Yes, sir.
So they pay and then they pay you guys, right?
Multiple options.
Okay.
Uh, we actually, you know, we actually provide any of those options. We're a fan of paying through the mortuary because the last thing I want to be is a debt collector for a family that's grieving. It's actually extremely awkward too when they come in and mom's just passed. And I'm like, oh, we have this option for you. I can prepay another $700 and grandfather in those costs. But we do allow people to come in, prepay through us, uh, as well. Really, we're all about the customer service and it's whatever is convenient. Some people would rather see the money go directly to where the plot goes, so we separate that. But it's 50/50. Well, people can set up, write one check to the mortuary or go through us. Typically, the ones that set up through the mortuary, it's a life insurance thing. So the family signs their life insurance, so everything will be paid for by them. We stay away from that because it's a headache for finance to sit there and track. Six months later, we might get lucky to get that payment back. So hair mortuary, when they set up there, all life insurances go through them. And that way we can just bill hair mortuary, they can regularly pay us. But we do have those, uh, and yes, we accept credit cards too. But, uh, yeah. Any other questions?
We do.
Charge up a big mountain and check out.
It's interesting. I want to thank everyone for the support. I also want to thank, uh, Ty for putting up with us. You guys think it's bad listening to me for a 10-minute council meeting? This guy gets to hear from me every day, so. This guy gets to hear from me every day, so, uh, the guys have really put in the work. I know I've always been in that drum, but man, the guys that I work side by side with, the work they've put in, uh, they're the reason why we have a good product to sell. It's definitely not, uh, my long-winded self over here, so, thank you.
One thing I wanted to say, Matt, is I was really impressed when we went out there to the golf course and you were explaining all that stuff. I, I was just like, wow. You know, my, my head just blew up, uh, how much you guys, how much work you have out there and the good, the good job you're doing.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Keep up your dedication.
Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it. All right. I think the last budget, uh, then is, uh, Doak and the Parks Department.
Rumor has it it's his last one.
Seniority doesn't get you anything.
I guess not. Got to wait till the very end of the meeting.
Forty years and still the guy's sitting around.
Good evening, Councilman, Mr. Mayor. Um, we had a few changes. One of the changes we started with was, um, we added a line item for irrigation of parks. We haven't had a separate line item for that for quite a while. Uh, that's, uh, I've probably already spent 6,000 out of my maintenance of parks account this year just on irrigation parts and, and stuff.
Is that for maintaining the irrigation system?
Yes, maintaining the irrigation system. Sprinklers, cost, like Matt was saying, costs have gone up on everything. Um, then we, uh, fertilizer and chemicals, again, as Matt alluded to, with the price of fuel going up, everything's going up with fertilizer and chemicals, the fuel and oil, uh, tools and equipment even. So that's, that went up, uh, $5,000. The tree maintenance, we raised from 20,000 up to 30,000 this next year. Uh, we're hoping to really ramp up our efforts on removing dead trees, on trimming trees. Uh, I know this last couple of weeks we've ground probably 58 stumps throughout town. Um, just finished this week on West Street and then Sherman Street today. Like we have one more on Main Street tomorrow. So we've, uh, asked for an increase in the tree maintenance budget. Uh, fuel and oil, we're going, asking for an increase. Again, as everybody said, the price of fuel is going up. Uh, tools and equipment, we asked for an extra $2,000 next year. Um, that was, this was the first year that we've split that account. We were, the cemetery and parks were one budget on that. And now that we're separate budgets, um, I think we, I have a little better feel on how much we're going to spend on tools and equipment. That's also where we get our safety items out of that account. So, um, just this, every year the, our bucket truck inspection is 1,200. So that's added a little bit of expense there. And then maintenance of equipment and vehicles. We've, uh, we're way over budget in that this year already, uh, mainly because of a one lawnmower that cost us a fortune to get fixed, but, um, so we increased that, that amount also. Um, one other, one other increase was in landscape and horticulture where we're asking from, going up from 5,000 to 10,000. A big part of that is, uh, buying the wood chips that we put in playgrounds. That's, uh, that's a, I've already spent, well, last fall and last, in the spring, I spent $4,000 just on, on engineered wood fibers, what it's called for wood chips. So that will, that will allow us to, to buy even more of those of the engineered wood fiber for that. That's the only real big changes I have. Do you have any questions?
I did, uh, see, I realized I missed a miscellaneous account. So I'll look at that with Doak and we'll figure out where that money should be allocated. Um, you know, I see there's some expenses in there over the years, but I'm certain that could be allocated to, to its own, uh, you know, appropriate line items. So I'll look at that with Doak and, uh, we'll correct that one in the final budget.
Yeah, we don't have anything specific we charged in miscellaneous.
Yeah.
Good job, good job on getting the dead trees out of here. Lots of complaints on that. They see that happening. It's good.
We have a, our, our city forester, Jorge Rico, has done a, done a really good job.
Yeah, that's great.
He really, really got the stumps ground out of there. That was, uh, been doing that for a couple of weeks.
People that walk around, you know, they're, they're really appreciative of the dead trees being taken out, so.
We're trying. We still have a lot more to go. Thank you.
Any other questions for Doak? All right. Thanks, Doak. Appreciate it. Um, so that's all the, uh, prepared budgets. I do have an item that we tabled from the last meeting. You'll recall we had a conversation about Bob stock and, and potentially, uh, a contribution, cash contribution to that. I, I committed to you that I would come back tonight with some numbers of what we're spending with staff and other in-kind waivers for both Bob stock and for the car show. So looking at that, um, you know, we did a fee waiver for Bob stock in the amount of $9,000 and we have, uh, other expenses in labor and equipment, um, that bring the total with that fee waiver of a cost of Bob stock at 15,000. That's what it cost us to, to do that work and to provide that event with our staff, equipment and the waivers that we have. The car show, that, um, event doesn't cost us as much in, uh, in either side, really. There's virtually no expense from the police department for the car show and that saves quite a little bit of money. But, um, the total for the car show is, is about half of Bob stock at $7,000. So I just give you those numbers for you to consider, um, what, what you wish on that. I didn't look at any other events because those are the two really big ones that take a lot of staff time, um, and a lot of expense, a lot of fee waivers. We certainly have a lot of events throughout the year. I think a big one for Lauren is coming up is this, uh, Break the Silence concert. That'll be a big event for him in expenses, but not a lot of expense to the, to the rest of the city staff. But I think the two big ones, Bob stock and the car show, so 15,000 for Bob stock, 7,000 for the car show. Um, when you look at traffic to those events, they both bring a lot of folks. I think the car show is certainly bigger in the amount of folks it brings to town. Um, but, uh, you know, the car show certainly does bring, uh, folks. So, um, I just committed to bring the information back to you and I guess I can turn the conversation back over to you all or we can table this if you want to think about it and whatever y'all wish.
Well, we get a monthly, or a monthly breakdown of sales tax.
We do.
Generation and we.
We've not seen July yet for this year. Yeah, correct.
I mean, we can see if, what the increases are because car show and Bob stock are in the same month, September and July.
Every year. Yeah, correct. Yeah, yeah.
Same month. It's not July.
Yeah, yeah, correct.
But we can, we can look at those and get a, a rough, a rough idea of what it is, but it's, uh, something I appreciate too, getting this information.
Sure.
So expedient is what.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I would like to have it on the agenda for next time. So we could.
Yeah. Yeah. We'll put something on the agenda then, specific to that issue, donation, uh, cash donation to events. We'll just put it, something like that at the next agenda.
Will we have July's numbers?
I, we will not. Typically, we get those about the 10th of the month and I think the first meeting is on the 7th. We might. Sometimes I get them a little early, so, yep.
Move it to September.
Maybe the second meeting in September.
Yeah, okay. Sure.
Of October.
Yeah. Okay. Perfect. That's it for budgets. Thank you.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight's consent agenda includes item A, approval of the disbursements and payroll for July, and item B, approval of the minutes of the August 3rd, 2021 City Council regular meeting. All matters under item 13 are considered routine business by the council and will be enacted with a single motion and a single vote by roll call. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is deemed necessary, that item should be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution to approve the consent agenda and the minutes from the last meeting.
Take it. I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Doug Sashow. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Reports by officials and staff.
Okay. Uh, just real quick, I would just offer some comments, uh, related to the Navajo Avenue alley. I certainly have had a lot of conversation, uh, with Ms. Graham, uh, on that issue. And I know Brent has as well, and I'm going to invite Brent to come up and, and just comment briefly on, on what Dustin has done over there. Certainly, uh, has been on our radar, um, uh, and we're certainly working as hard as we can to address the issue as soon as today reached out again to vector our mosquito control folks and ask them to make sure they pay attention to that area, uh, with larvicide and other efforts to control mosquitoes. Um, you know, clearly the, the area over there, if you've looked at it, is very wet. There's not much we can do with the weeds that are just inundated in water clearly, but I do know Dustin's been in contact with the property owner. Um, certainly the comments related to weeds around the dumpsters and things are, are well-received and, and we'll continue to look at that. But they have not, uh, those comments don't fall on deaf ears and staff is working very hard to try to address that issue as we do with any, uh, concerns or complaints that we get throughout the city. But I'll let Brent just speak briefly to what they're doing over there.
Yeah, just a couple of things. It, it was Dustin that actually had the conversation with her that indicated that it wasn't in the city limits. Not just because Dustin had just started on the job and wasn't aware that we had annexed that property in a couple of years ago. Um, shortly after the rest of us in the office heard that conversation, we quickly corrected him and had him respond to that. Uh, Dustin has had numerous conversations, um, with the tenant farmer that is taking care of that property. Um, he has given Dustin his cell number, so Dustin talks to him on a regular basis. Uh, the first time Eva contacted the office, um, the farmer was contacted. He quickly mowed. He responded to Dustin's request and he mowed the entire area since it was dry. They had not started irrigation of that field. Um, shortly after several rain events and irrigation started, um, we were contacted again by Eva. Dustin once again reached out to the farmer. The farmer came over and mowed the perimeter of it to take care of the weeds that were growing up around the edges, knowing that he couldn't take his tractor down into it. Um, Dustin, um, has contacted the farmer once again this week. He did not get a response from him yesterday when he tried to call him, but he had, um, contact with him this afternoon. Dustin has informed me that he is planning on going over yet this week and taking care of the, the dumpsters. He realizes that that is something that needs to be addressed. And part of this is, um, them being a good neighbor with the city. Um, that area is a, more or less a designated stormwater area and stormwater areas are exempt from our nuisance, you know, regulations. And so we, we, we feel within the department that we are getting the, you know, response from them when we contact them. And so, and Dustin is staying in direct contact with them on that. And so it's a matter of getting in contact and getting them over there to respond. And obviously the farmer is taking care of lots of acreage right now and, and so getting to us when he can. But we are getting a response out of the individual that is taking care of the farm for the, the owner is, doesn't live in Morgan County and has put this gentleman in charge of it. And so, so we're doing everything we can to stay on top of it. So you have to answer any other questions.
I, I would just also address the concern with Tacoma and West Street. And as you know, um, and, and I had this conversation with Ms. Graham about, um, you know, I, I am deeply concerned about the safety of kids and individuals that live in the neighborhood. But, um, you know, you do not install traffic lights or traffic control devices of any kind out of emotion. That is done through engineering study and recommendation. And we've certainly had that intersection studied by a couple of, uh, traffic engineers with the traffic as it exists today and proposed traffic based on subdivisions that may come in the near future. And we actually have those studies that specifically say, do not install a four-way stop. Now, they didn't address the traffic light situation. So I've asked Brent to hire yet another traffic engineer to look at that intersection one more time. And I think you just signed that contract, uh, tonight before the meeting. So we are working with another traffic engineer to look at that intersection one more time in light of the potential subdivision south of the middle school and the traffic from the school. And then we will see what the engineering study requires and suggests. And that's when you install traffic control devices. And they take into account all types of data, including accidents and other things. So we'll certainly look at that again and, and we take that situation very, very seriously. But it's actually worse and you can be even more liable if you install a traffic control device and it's not warranted. So we have to be very careful when we do these types of things. So we, we will look at it one more time and make sure that, um, you know, with the situation that exists today or, and/or in the future will be addressed appropriately.
Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, right there, isn't there a pedestrian crossing light of some sort for the kids to cross right there over, over West Street?
The school district does have one.
Yes, yes. Yeah, because I, I walk that area.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Yep.
So there is some sort of pedestrian.
Yeah, for pedestrians, sure. Yeah, yeah.
And the other thing about what she brought up tonight and what you're talking about and everything is she's talking about her almost having an accident being related to child safety and everything else and school hasn't started and there wasn't anything to do with the kids. It was almost getting hit by a truck. And I couldn't make the leap of logic there either, but I do think that, like I said, in the interest where school is getting started, that having the study, since we don't have one with respect to a traffic light is probably a good move.
I think what she was referring to was the line of sight.
Yes.
Aspect of it because, and you know, you, you come to that on a regular basis. You, you really have to pull up because of the vegetation.
There is.
The hedges that are there. And I think that, that one was, I can see that being something that we may want to look at, which would not be part of a traffic study.
Correct. Yeah, we, we, we have a dedicated, uh, uh, sight distance triangle in our code and, and I appreciate Lynn. Lynn went to visit the gentleman to the north and I, I forget his name. Um, but he did trim back a lot of the vine weed or vines that were growing around the, the poles and so on. And that's helped tremendously. But to the south, there's a row of hedges on private property. So, you know, that can be a, um, challenging conversation to, you know, approach that gentleman about sight distance triangle and removing vegetation on private property that's impeding the sight distance. And we can certainly have that conversation when the time is right, but we will be asking somebody to remove vegetation off of private property.
No, I was just trying to clarify that it was.
Yep, no, that's correct.
Sight, not traffic is what I think she was referring to.
Yeah.
And I, I agree wholeheartedly. The private property is going to be.
It could be a tough one, but, 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 and again, I, I just want to reiterate, we take that very seriously and, and those concerns do not fall on deaf ears. I've had a number of conversations with Ms. Graham, um, and tried to, uh, work a solution, but sometimes the answer's just no. And, and I hate that. I'm a guy that tries to find a way to ask. You guys know that. But sometimes the answer's just no. And on a traffic light right now, the answer's no.
Well, you're, you hit it on the head. You don't do it traffic light by emotion.
Right.
Um, there's a process for it. We had, the school district did, Clint's not here. The school district did a traffic study when the middle school went in.
Right.
Came back and said there was not a need or a necessity for it.
Correct.
So.
And we have one from Rob Graves from an early part of his subdivision that also indicates that. So we'll have a third one and hopefully, um, we can put this issue to, uh, to bed. One way or the other. So, thank you. That's all I had.
Thanks, Brent. I would ask one more thing on tonight, just of you and everything. I, I thank you for bringing back the report on, uh, Bob stock and everything. Could you, as we're going through the budget part and everything like that, bring out the number of proposed new FTEs?
I will.
You know, because I know we had five.
You know, because I know we had five proposed tonight.
Yeah.
And I don't know what we've had previously and everything, but that's just a number I'd like to know, if you would, please.
I will. I will have that for you all at the next meeting, for sure.
That'll be January.
Oh, Mayor. Your Honor, I have a reminder.
Go ahead.
On, to end our meeting, I would like to publicly say how proud I was of our manager who gave a talk to all the new teachers today. It was authentic, it was funny, it was, I learned something about him. It was a delightful talk, and not political, not, you know, the, the normal stuff that you always get. It was well-done and inspiring, so thank you, it was very well-done.
Thank you, Lynn. It was my pleasure to, first of all, I was really humbled to be asked to speak to that group this morning, and it's, it's always a pleasure to, to, you know, share with the community and, and just embrace that sector of our, of our population. That is, that's a difficult industry right now to be in, and so it was really great to be with those folks and welcome them to Fort Morgan and just really celebrate and honor what they do day in and day out. So thank you, Lynn, I appreciate that.
From the sounds, oh, you need an English lesson.
I need a lot of English lessons.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to concur to that. I really, really, really appreciated your speech this morning. It was short, concise, I mean, it was concise, and it really, really exposed a lot of who you are.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
It's more stuff, but, yeah. Had to be there.
Mayor, I do have a couple of things, if I, if I may, tonight. And I'll be quick, because I know Jeff is getting really tired over here. First off, first off, in reference to the traffic safety and all, and the kids and, and engineering, one of the things that's happening, of course, this week is Thursday, school starting up again. There's eight school zones in the city of Fort Morgan, so we will be trying to work those. I will also say that I've had a lot of correspondence with you guys and been working with the school district to try to solve a problem that we've had persistently at Sherman School, and, much to my disappointment, I met with them and Brent met with them back in May. We had a great plan, they were going to do it. I've been reaching out to them and gotten no response. At the barbecue with the Blue the other night, I was informed that they are not doing anything with Sherman School, so this problem is not going to be solved. So the problem at Sherman School will persist. Traffic, we were going to reroute them over to Beaver. They didn't do the work. They said they didn't have the funding, it was going to cost too much money, so it never got done. So we will continue to have that problem, we will continue to try to work it, but be aware, and I hope the public is aware, that, you know, the kids are going to be out there. That's always a problem. We have a lot of people parking and walking their kids across the street, and they're trying to do some timing differences still, swapping or moving that time back between kindergarten and preschool, so that hopefully we don't have as many cars trying to go through that line as, as there have been. As Steve said, every engineer comes out there, says there is no solution to the problem. We had something that may help alleviate a problem, it's not there, so we're going to be focusing on that. Secondly, you know, our barbecue at the Blue thing was last Tuesday. It was great, appreciate all of your support, and, and really with the community, couldn't have been better. I couldn't, couldn't imagine a better event. We had a few minor hiccups, but overall, it went, went great, and Michelle Miller did a fantastic job putting that together, so, thanks to everybody in the community for, for coming out and showing support.
Anyone else? Bids, meetings, and announcements. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. The city is accepting sealed bids for stormwater detention pond maintenance services until 3:00 PM on August 20. Under meetings, the planning commission will meet next Monday, the 23rd, at 4:30 PM here at City Hall. Following day, the 24th, there will be a downtown parking public forum here at City Hall at 5:30 PM in this room. The Heritage Foundation is scheduled to meet on the 26th at 4:00 PM. There's a longer break than usual because of the calendar. On September 6, all city offices will be closed for the Labor Day holiday, and the next City Council regular meeting won't be till September 7 at 6:00 PM here. And just one quick announcement, the city gas department recently earned an award from the American Public Gas Association for 10 years of continuous workplace safety. We did a news release to the paper, Facebook posts, pictures of the guys in the department and the award, and that's all on our website and social media.
Make sure I'm not forgetting anything. Nothing else coming before council meeting adjourned?